All lead order stands to question very cool, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call number, hold call, starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh Aaron.
Counselperson John Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John Kane.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Allen.
For approval of tonight's agenda, anything in addition to the issues, anything for here? If not so, there's a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry. Approval of council meeting minutes of May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve them.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will also carry. That will take us to financing budget. Got the council payable listing in your packet. If you have any questions on that, ask our finance director, Carla.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a motion to approve financing budget? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry. I'll take this reading to motions and general business. First item under motions and general business tonight is Rolling Hill Transit Bill Slitter, Director of Transportation, is here to give us a talk. Thanks for stepping up the podium.
Pretty used to it.
Yeah, this is old school for me. Mr. Mayor, member of the council, Minister Schimmel, thank you very much for giving the opportunity to come in and talk with you today. Just gonna give you a short report on what's been happening with Rolling Hills Transit, your public transit system. Also gonna give a short little report on the other legs of the transit system, who we work for, SEMCAC Transportation, all under one umbrella. First, I'm gonna start out with Rolling Hills Transit, our public transit system that's serving the community of Stewartville. If you remember from your packet, you should have a few things over in there. I'll just start out with this one. This one kind of shows all the different transit areas in the state of Minnesota. So, all the transits outside the big metro areas, Rochester, Twin Cities, is covered by rural transits. If you flip over to the other side, that kind of gives you this operating area for Rolling Hills Transit. So basically, we have five different counties that Rolling Hills Transit operates under. We serve or have eleven buses, or excuse me, thirteen buses in eleven communities. We have two communities that have two buses, the communities of Caledonia and the communities of Cassin. Both have two buses serving those particular communities. So of those thirteen buses serving those eleven communities, we also serve up to twenty other communities. Our total of twenty communities within southeastern Minnesota that take part in our public transit. We try to keep fares as low as we possibly can. We charge two dollars for in-town. So if you're moving around and about the community of Stewartville, you'll pay two dollars to get anywhere you want in the community. If you're moving between towns, there's not really, well, I suppose you go to Racine. Racine for three dollars, so anything up to eight miles is a three-dollar fare. And anything over eight miles is a six-dollar fare, so six dollars for going to Rochester, Chatfield, or some of these are stronger communities. So just to kind of give you an idea, Rolling Hills Transit in the system last year served just, just over forty-nine thousand people within the system. We also served in just the community of Stewartville, a little over fifty-one hundred. Five thousand one hundred and seventy-eight passengers were utilizing the service in Stewartville last year. The first quarter of twenty twenty-four, thirteen hundred and forty passengers rode your service in the community of Stewartville. Twenty-five thousand miles were put on last year on the community bus. About twenty-one passengers, twenty-one rides per day were ridden on those particular buses. We also had twenty-three, a little over twenty-three hundred service hours in the community of Stewartville. So that's kind of wraps up a little bit about the Rolling Hills Transit, some of the numbers that we have within your community. So one of the things that we really depend a lot on is the communities that we serve, because we are funded almost primarily by MNDOT. And we're served by MNDOT by, they give us the, about ninety-five percent of our, our operating budget is covered by MNDOT. The other five percent of our operating budget is covered by local match, communities, fares, et cetera. In addition to that local match, we're also required to purchase buses. Most of our buses have well over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand miles. Because of COVID- nineteen, that shut down a lot of the production of our buses. And we're just finally starting to take delivery, some of those buses, and replacing those. We just took on three new buses this past January. Those new buses went to Chatfield and Cassin and also Caledonia. We tried to replace as many of those buses as we possibly can. Our next buses, two of them we just took delivery of on Friday, those buses will go to the communities of Dover Yoda and Dodge Center, as well as Rochford. Just to give you an idea of how much buses have increased in price, the buses that we took delivery for in January cost us about ninety-three thousand dollars. The buses that we just took delivery of on Friday cost us about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. We also are taking delivery of three more buses in December of this year. Those went for a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. That will be paying for those. I just placed an order for a new bus in Lewiston, and we paid a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for that particular bus. And we're expected to take on delivery of three additional buses after that. And those are going to be sold for, you guessed it, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars apiece. Yes, so they've went up substantially since we started taking those deliveries. So each one of those particular buses that we obtained, we pay up to a twenty percent match for each one of those buses. So that's where we kind of come to the local communities to ask for support. And I appreciate the support that the community of Stewartville has provided us. I understand that you're very proactive, and we appreciate that, setting aside dollars this year and setting aside dollars next year as well for the bus. Stewartville is not slated for a bus until after the first of the year, so sometime in twenty twenty-five. Probably later in twenty twenty-five is when the city of Stewartville's bus is slated to be replaced. Like I said, most of our buses have anywhere between a hundred and ninety thousand to two-hundred-and-eighty thousand miles on them. So we're looking forward to getting some of those replaced to decrease some of those maintenance costs. So why transit? I also put that in your packet as well. Ten reasons why you should look at transit and why public transit's important. Just gonna tell you a quick couple of stories. I once sat in Mr. Mayor's shoes in the city of St. Charles. And one of the things that I did, and it was unfortunate, is I actually cut the funding for Rolling Hills Transit. And I found out very quickly, after I was enlightened by the services that we provide, of how important that was. Incidentally, over my course of my ten years that I served as mayor, we did reinstate the local match to Rolling Hills Transit. But who do we serve? Not everybody's as fortunate as I am. I have two motor vehicles sitting in my garage. And anytime I want to go someplace, or anytime my wife wants to go anyplace, we just hop in the car, we go to wherever we want. Unfortunately, that's not the same case for a lot of individuals. I had a full-time job working for sheriff's office. When I left that sheriff's office, I started driving bus. And that's where I think my parents started for what I did with the cutting of the subsidy for Rolling Hills Transit. And I got to meet a lot of the passengers. The one passenger that sticks out is an individual in St. Charles. And she needed to get from St. Charles to her medical appointment up at the Mayo Clinic. Unfortunately, she did not have insurance that would cover some of the other rides that are available. And she had to ride for a hundred dollars to get to her medical appointment. On the flip side, when I was giving her a ride that day to the Mayo Clinic, she paid twelve dollars. So a very affordable rate. We try to make that rate as affordable as we possibly can. Another story I'm in tonight is right here from hometown Stewartville. I also substituted drove in the city of Stewartville for a number of years. And an individual named Kathy needed to get to, to and from the assisted living to visit her husband. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to drive to those engagements with her husband, just because of not losing her driver's license, but just not being able to obtain the driver's license. And she just felt that, you know, she really needed to do that. So our service for four dollars a day enabled her to go to the assisted living to have lunch with her husband three times a week. So this service is something that is invaluable, in my humble opinion, and something that is very important for our communities. And it fits that need that we have in these smaller communities. So with that, I'm gonna open it up for any questions that you may have about Rolling Hills Transit. Once again, I, I want to thank you for being proactive and setting aside some funds to replace that bus in twenty twenty-five. One of the things that I proposed to Administrator Schimmel is, we would like to, after this next set of buses are purchased, would like to see if we could move on to a local match of about five thousand dollars from each community on an annual basis. That kind of helps out with that operating match that we're requiring now as well. Just something to consider, I've been doing these presentations to all of the city councils throughout southeastern Minnesota. I know where the councils felt that that was an easier way to budget some of those things. But we're definitely open to anything that works best for, for your community, so. With that, I'll stop talking. Sometimes it's hard to stop a former mayor from talking. We just kind of keep going and going and going. But I will give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have with the service.
You want to take one question from that? It is, we, it is a valuable service in our community. It's, ridership has grown tremendously the last couple of years. It almost stopped for a while, there were, people just weren't using it, but all of a sudden it took off again.
Yeah, and just so you know, Mr. Mayor, one of the things that we're gonna focus on, there's three things that are really gonna grow in our system that I believe have incredible potential. One of them is your community, the community of Stewartville. We're gonna start doing a little bit more active marketing in this area to make sure that we are covering everybody we possibly can. Dodge Center is another one of those communities, and Chatfield's another one. So those are kind of the three communities that I'm really focused on this year to try to increase that ridership. My goal is to see if we can increase five percent. We have been moving toward that pretty, pretty good. So we'll see if we can make that by the end of the year.
We appreciate the service around here, especially there. It's like you said, our clients are beauty, they can't get around something.
Just curious, do people have to call ahead, like reserve a time to be picked up, or how does that work?
So that's a great question. We are strictly a dial server, or a dial ride service. So anytime somebody needs a ride, they do have to call ahead. We encourage everybody to call at least twenty-four hours ahead of time. However, if you call today and we have an opening on the bus, we'll certainly come and pick you up. So we have a few people that do call the day of and ask for service. And if we have a slot, we will do that. Just so you kind of know how our system works, just because that Stewartville bus might not be available. If we have a bus like in Chatfield, or sometimes the Dover Yoda bus happens to be delivering people over this area, we will utilize every bus that we have in our system to provide service for your community. So it might not always be the official Stewartville bus that picks you up, but we will try to accommodate as soon as we can.
All right. Any other questions?
No thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Just talking about it.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good day.
You're welcome to stay here and go if you want.
That brings back old memories.
All right, next item under, will be proposed chicken ordinance. The first reading of the proposed chicken ordinance was heard on the May fourteenth meeting with input from the public. Council instructs the staff to amend the proposed ordinance to, number one, allow four hens. Number two, require majority of the yard to be fenced. Note, it was added that the cooks and runs would only be allowed in the backyard. There's a suggestion that the fee for the application be set at a hundred, which would cover staff time for review of the application inspection needed. Now that permit is for two years too, correct?
Correct.
We have a question on the wording of majority of the yard. Is that, what do we call them, majority of the yard?
Something over half.
So we felt it still helps the double protection, but doesn't, if you don't need your whole yard, gives them a little break, I guess, along those lines.
A few questions. If you don't have to add that?
I don't have it the whole yard, but I think we're around the problems that the majority is, so.
Majority is to me, half.
Well, typically, you know, half is, so it's up to you guys what you want to do. That's not our suggestion, that's.
Only in the backyard.
Yeah.
Only in the backyard, yeah.
Only in the backyard.
Yeah. And that's something they could go through with as, like this. Their application, right? They'd have to provide drawing of their funds.
Yes.
Well, Brian's question, to me, was kind of, majority to one person is different than majority to another. He felt it'd be easier to say the entire backyard.
Yeah, we're okay anyway. We just thought if that gave people a little break, I fancy.
You take it from there.
I figured if it's that majority that people are gonna come in on, not, you know, argue if this is fifty percent, sixty percent, seventy percent, thirty percent.
We allow fencing up to the front of the house right now. So is that majority, is that part of the backyard then? So the side yards up to the front of the house will be included. So do you want to reword it?
Personally, I do, but it's up to everybody else.
I don't want to do it. I think, do whatever you want, it's your organs.
I mean, if nobody in, in, that presented, I mean, I don't think we've had any complaints about how it was read originally. It was their idea. I mean, did you guys get any complaints about it? That's what we said last, or two weeks ago, I mean.
Could you put fifty-one percent plus next to that, so they know?
What's the point of putting fifty-one percent of fence? Dog just runs right around it anyhow. I mean, so I don't get it. But like I said, I don't care.
Well, it's either, I'll bring it up to you, you folks, you want the entire backyard, or you want the majority. We have to have a wording in here.
I'm fine with the majority. I rather have the whole.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the majority. As long as it's understood, I mean, I, so, I mean, I'm looking at specific examples. And I have a neighbor who's got a pretty big yard, but they've got a significant area that's fenced in. I think that should be enough. It doesn't go all the way to their property line.
Chickens aren't allowed on the run of the coop anyhow, correct?
Correct.
Right.
They might have a run area.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I realize that, but they're not allowed, they're not fencing this in order to let the chickens run loose in the yard.
Yeah. Your goal of a double protection is being met with either choice.
That's right. The goal is to keep the neighbors from having a problem with their animals.
Well, they don't get closer. Yeah, yeah.
Would you have a vote, or can we just say we'll leave it at majority?
I think it's, a, a, majority would be fifty percent.
I understand that, but I mean, do we need to change the wording? Do we just leave it at majority?
Just leave it as is.
I guess we change it. So it's very clear.
Let's just make a vote on it. Do we want to leave it at majority? Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Everybody wants the entire yard fenced, say aye.
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 Aye. Fence the entire yard. Change that wording. All right, is there any other changes you know, Mr. Mayor, Brian?
No, I didn't.
Josh?
No.
You're mine.
We do still have three on the applicant, by the way. Yeah, like on this, when they, so we just have to tweak that to four.
Okay, yeah, I will do that, yeah.
I was just gonna say the same thing.
Otherwise, the residents' finances are agreed?
Yes.
Council action, then, will be to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four. An ordinance in chapter five, animals are followed to allow for cooking chickens within the city limits. Motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Pass is three to two. All right, we're gonna take this to the next one. Massage business and therapist, application approvals?
Calm down, Brian.
The city has received the following applications for approval. Body by soul, business license, Jolene Soul, therapist. By Cale DeGilla, business license, Diane Brandt, therapist, excuse me. Relax Wellness, business license. You're gonna have to help me with that one, Cheryl.
Um, what's this?
Relax Wellness. Name?
Oh, um, you don't have to read it, I don't.
Nice lady, therapist. Asian Massage and Fitness.
Ms. Hoyer?
Huh?
Ms. Hoyer.
Okay, clear. These licenses will be renewed in January of twenty twenty-six. So council action requested is approved the massage therapy business application, the massage therapist applications, as listed above. Motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That will carry.
That will take us on to public works.
It's odd that there's a request for a new vehicle.
Hey, he talked about two-hundred-and-some-thousand, I only asked him for forty-six.
Twenty twenty-four capital equipment plan, replace twenty-twelve Dodge truck. Is for the approval, approved twenty twenty-four capital equipment plan and the twenty twenty-four budget is scheduled for replacement. Truck's planned for twenty twenty-four with a budget of fifty-five thousand. This includes funds for a lift gate to be purchased at a later date if needed.
The lift gate, we are going to try and use the one that we have and see if it'll fit before we even see if we have to purchase one. We have to have two trucks with lift gates.
The lift gate right now is on the Dodge.
On the Dodge. We're gonna see if we can transfer that over, if it'll fit and work. If it does, we won't be purchasing a new one. If it doesn't, we may have to sell that one and purchase a lift gate.
The cost of replacement of the two thousand twelve Dodge truck has been estimated at forty-three thousand five hundred plus tax and licensing. We will be selling the truck via public surplus once the new Chevy Colorado has been received. We receive bench from our local dealership and surrounding communities. House Chevrolet was forty-four thousand five hundred ordering. Foxconn Chevy was forty-three thousand six hundred and twelve ordering. Chevy of Spring Valley, forty-two thousand five hundred and ten, or forty-three thousand five hundred in stock. The in-stock truck from Spring Valley has additional options, totally, four thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. That's included in the forty-three five, correct?
He had that one in stock, it had more options off than what we were bidding, so, but he's ordering to replace it.
Yeah, but it's still not among the beyond, it's included in the forty-three five.
Correct.
We are recommending using Chevy of Spring Valley for this purchase, receiving the truck that is in stock. This is essential due to the delay in Chevy Colorado. It was supposed to be delivered in March, currently there's no delivery date for the Colorado. So the auction, action, council action requested is approve or deny the purchase of a twenty twenty-four Chevy Silverado, fifteen-hundred grade, rear cab truck. We have a motion to approve, second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Silverado, a little bigger than Colorado.
Silverado. Fifteen hundred.
We have a motion, a second? Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry. All right, next one. Summerfest twenty twenty-four already, what we call, well, I guess June is six months into the year already. Summerfest is right around the corner, and approval is needed for two acts. Number one, temporary liquor license for the chamber. Number one, temporary liquor license for the Chamber of Commerce.